So greetings, folks. This is part two of our interview with the Carmel Clay School Board candidates. We have with us Jenny Brake, Greg Brown, and Adam Sharp, who are running for the school board. And in my last interview, it's my bad, I forgot to ask them about why they're running for school board. So I am back here to ask them why they're running for school board. And so I'm starting right off with that question. And who wants to begin?
Oh, no.
Okay, so Greg, okay, so go for it, Greg.
Yeah, thank you, Vicki. I decided a year ago to run because I was getting nervous with what I saw going on in the nation, with school districts across the country. And I was also challenged by a Franklin Graham rally he had back in 2016 at the State House about getting involved in local politics, which I never considered myself a politician. I still don't, and that's probably a good thing, right? Nice to have politicians that aren't politicians. So I decided that I did not like things like where we're really sexualizing our schools and our classrooms. And, you know, of course, we see it, you know, rather anecdotal type things, I suppose, in the news. But I just didn't want it to come into Carmel. And we had our son grow up here. We moved here because of the schools. We had a great experience, just really a lot of fun, you know, getting connected. My wife was involved in PTO, and we just had a blast of the whole thing. I did some volunteering with the administration office and some IT things. And just want to keep us on a good course. You know, we're noted for our schools, quality of schools, and the education levels are outstanding. And I just want to keep it on that track. So that's, that's why I decided to run.
That's great. What great reasons, yeah, because it is happening across the entire United States. Okay, Jenny?
Well, being a longtime Carmel resident, I thought about it a lot. My mom was very involved in like city council when we were growing up. And so it kind of was modeled in our family to do community service. And, you know, just the time wasn't, excuse me, the time wasn't really right. But then I thought, you know, where I am right now in my life, I had, I had the time. And I thought and thought about it more and, and really thought about kind of like almost paying it forward, you know, for the, for the, the great things that my parents did in this community and bringing us here, but also just their service. And then I, then I thought to myself, Jenny, would you run if everything was great at the Carmel schools? And I probably wouldn't. And you know what I mean? If everything was fine, and like Greg had said, that just from the national level and on down to, to Carmel, we've just seen some things that I think need, we need to have a course correction in, in academics and direction in the school. And if I can do anything to help, I, I just want to help, and I'd love to do it. So that's why I'm doing it.
That's great. That's great. And Adam?
Thanks, Vicki. I appreciate you pulling us together again here. For me, it was, it was a long thought process. I have two kids currently in the system, one that just graduated. We were very happy with the education that our oldest daughter had received. And like my co-candidates here, I, I was beginning to become a little bit nervous that some of the things that we've been seeing happen elsewhere in other school systems may make their way into our, you know, always great school system here in Carmel. I had a confluence of events occur in my life that gave me the bandwidth. I was able to step away from clinical medicine. I'm an ER doc by background, which gave me the time that I felt would be necessary to focus on this, to actually, you know, give it the, the due attention that I feel something like this deserves if you're going to do it effectively. And, you know, at a high level, I, I want to get back to common sense approach to education. I saw over the last two or three years, the board leaned in a different direction, away from prioritizing, focusing on, on putting academics first, leaning more towards social issues. And, you know, I think we live in an incredible community with incredible families that do a very adequate job of instilling morality in our children at home. And it started to feel to me as if it was being encouraged for our youth to become social activists first and students second, rather than the other way around. I see that as something that if not addressed, will continue to perpetuate. You know, we have an amazing gift in this community of having this incredible school system that's extremely well-funded with involved parents, that, that pulls the, the very best educators. And it's something that, like all things in life, if we don't recognize, appreciate, support, and protect, we run the chance of losing. So I felt that, you know, life has been good to me. This community's been incredibly good to me, and that it was time for me to step up and to use many of the skillsets that I've developed, both as a physician and as an entrepreneur, to give back, to give back to the community, to dive in and to ensure that it remains the wonderful community that it's always been.
Yeah, that's beautiful. Thank you all. Thank you very much for that. You know, I, I want to shift gears for a moment and, and just, and talk a little bit about how busy you've been, because I'm seeing signs go up all over the city. I mean, just, I drive, you know, I go to different churches all the time. I'm very active in the community, and, and I'm just seeing them everywhere. And I know that you have a meet and greet tonight. You've had them over the weekend. I can't, I can't imagine how much weight you're putting on in all these meet and greets with the food and the beverages. You guys are going to be on the Jenny Craig diet at the end of this thing, as we roll into the holidays, too. So, but, but it's all for a good cause, right? It's all for a good cause. Has there been any funny instances as you're meeting with folks or any memorable moments?
I was talking to a gentleman the other day. He's ninety-something, I forget what he was, and, and, you know, he said, someone asked him, well, how you doing? And he says, well, compared to what? And I thought that was, that's pretty well said of all, is, oh, yeah.
And we're all like that, right? Compared to what, you know? I mean, because, because we look around us, right? Oh, my gosh, yeah.
I was gonna say, a comment on the yard signs. It's, it's become quite a, quite a thing on its own. And I see them popping up all over the place. They're still popping up. And I got on my computer late last night. Somebody had messaged me and said, I want a, I want a bigger sign. And my neighbor wants one, too. And it's like, wow, okay, well, we'll put that order in. But we've, you know, we've, these signs are going up mostly by themselves. We're not going out knocking on doors saying, we want to put a sign in your yard. There, you know, we've knocked on doors, but, and, and we, if people sound compassionate enough, you know, I'll ask them if they want a sign. And a lot of times they won't, they won't, you know, they don't want to offend neighbors or, you know, cause a problem with neighbors. So not, you know, a lot of people don't put them up. But what's kind of stunning to me is that so many people have requested them. And I'll go in a neighborhood for the first time, it's already got signs everywhere. So it's like, okay, who's been here? But I know no one's been there because we, we keep track of who's gone where, basically. And so there, there's a lot of excitement, I think, for, for, for this ticket. And I think these candidates, you know, I've gotten really to know Jenny and Adam here, and they're just, they're wonderful Carmel community people. And so it's pretty exciting. I think the committee is really coming on fire for, for what we're standing for.
Absolutely. So I have a tough question for you three, because I've actually gotten some questions on this, because you're, you're, the first video, we've all, we've already gotten just in the last five or six days, more than 700 views on that video from local citizens. And by the way, 100% likes, no dislikes on that video. It's, it's just phenomenal. So, so the question is this, there's been books, there, there was a group of parents a year ago that went in and read some books that were very disturbing. They, they actually read out loud some books that are, were in the elementary school, in the middle school, and at the high school level. And these books were so disturbing that the superintendent and the board actually said, stop reading the books out loud because they're so offensive. And, and the books, you know, folks, if you're listening to this, get your kids out of the room. They were on masturbation. They were on sexual relations between girls and boys. They were on sexual relations between girl and girl, boy on boy, transgenderism, all sorts of different things. I know that you even have some of the data on your website. Okay? So what is your stance on some of these questionable books? Especially the age appropriateness of those? And I don't know who wants to take this first?
I'm happy to jump in, Vicki. You know, as you pointed out, you can go to our website and see our positions. We've tried to be very forthright with where we stand on a number of these, you know, subjects that, that are somewhat inflammatory in nature. With regards to books in particular, we believe that, that there are a few things that we need to always be taking into consideration when we assess and decide which supplemental materials, which materials, more even more broadly, our children are being provided in a structured way at school. We believe they should be age appropriate, and we believe that parents should have a key role in not only understanding, but also assessing and deciding as to which materials are appropriate to have within the school environment. Now, the folks who are on the other side of this debate will say that we are trying to ban books and that we are trying to take away people's First Amendment rights. It's kind of a tried and true playbook, you know, to scare the populace into believing that we're some sort of, you know, radical book burners. And nothing could be further from the truth. We just want common sense, reasonable, rational approaches to deciding at what age is it appropriate for our youngest citizens to be exposed to and contemplating these subjects that traditionally have really been in the realm of the family, not of the schools. We're not against sexual education. At the right age, kids should understand, you know, it's responsible to educate our children as to, you know, various aspects of sexual education. But where I'll say, I draw the line, and I believe Jenny and Greg agree with me, is that at a very young age, trying to expose children to the idea of sexual identity, you know, encouraging them at a very young age to start, start wrestling with their own emotions in this, this area, I don't believe it's responsible. I think that it's something that parents should be focusing on first and foremost to the elementary level. At the middle school level, we'll get into a structured sexual ed courses many of us, even when we were in school, went through. And beyond that, I don't necessarily think it's the role of public education to be focusing on, on encouraging our children to self-identify as anything at a very young age.
Yeah, that's, that's incredibly helpful. You know, the, the challenge with all of this is, I sat through some of this, many of the Senate testimonies when they were trying to propose a bill in this last legislative session to try to do some reforms and put forth a transparency bill that would also engage parents. And, and Senator Scott Baldwin had actually talked about the, the issue with the books in the school libraries. And he said, if you took those same books and you walked across the street outside of the school libraries and you offered those to the children, you would be arrested. You, you literally would be arrested. And, and so we have to get back to a reasonable standard to, to understand that, you know, the children's minds are being developed and, and at a very young age. And there's, there's a lot of scientific data out there to show when that data, data, you know, when, when this kind of information is presented to children at a young age, it can be harmful.
Then the other thing here, Vicki, on this subject that, that I think we need to look at is there's a little bit of a loophole in that if you donate books directly to a classroom, my understanding is they don't have to go through the same, you know, rigor and process of, of evaluation as books that are found in the library. And, you know, some of the folks, and sadly, there are some folks out there that are proactively trying to expose our youngest citizens to this type of subject matter, have recognized this loophole. And while I don't think it's many educators, there are a few that are on board with that. And they welcome those donations into their classroom. They even have Amazon Book Wishlists where you can purchase these types of materials to be donated to a classroom. And when they do that, they go right into the classroom in our elementary school level. And unless a parent sees them there, nobody else is really watching. Again, I think that the materials that we provide to our kids need to be going through a process where we are collectively assessing them and understanding in a very, you know, democratic process, through a very democratic process of debate and rigor, which of these materials are appropriate and at what age.
Very well said. I mean, very, very well said. And, and I would, and I would assume that Jenny and Greg, you agree with this?
Yeah, absolutely. When we get, when we get that question about banning books, I mean, that's not the right question. It's just, you know, are there, are there materials in there, in the, in the school libraries and the class libraries that are not safe? And I mean, we're all about safety, and this is a real big aspect of that. And, and if they're pornographic in nature, like you said before, they don't, they don't belong. And, you know, there, there's a spectrum of that. But, you know, I mean, personally, I mean, I was adversely affected by pornography at a young age, even as a female. And not that it made me, you know, over, or, or, I don't know what the word is, but prone towards sexual activity, not at all. It actually did the reverse where, you know, during my junior high years, boy, I had a lot of self pity because I, I looked at, you know, it was softer stuff, but I looked at magazines that I could not compete with the beauty, you know, of women. And it, it just drove me into depression and actually even some, even some thoughts of suicide. So, I mean, even females are affected by this. And I think we just, you know, they always say a definition of, you know, nobody can really define what pornography is, but you know it when you see it. And so we just need to be really careful and protect our kids because they're impressionable. I was impressionable, and it does affect, it does affect a kid's heart and mind.
Why aren't we hearing authentic witnesses and testimonies like this? They are trying to cover up the truth like this. We need to hear more witnesses like this, because this is the dark side of it. Yeah, very well said.
You know, it's interesting, I was walking the other day with my wife, knocking on doors and talking to people in the community about school things. And this woman ran across the street at us because she saw, she saw my shirt, which looked like a yard sign. And so she knew that I was like, oh, I know who this is. And she ran up and said, you guys are into book burning, or book banning? And, and then she, she went on for, you know, quite a long time. I couldn't, I couldn't get a word in. I finally, you know, politely, you know, asked her, I said, you know, you know, if you give me a chance, I could answer your question of where I, where I stand. You know, and it really boils down to, people make that inflammatory accusation of book banning. It sounds like we want to take it out of the whole sphere of the United States of America. And we're not saying that. There are certain books that, and I, I look at books as being, if it's going to be in a school library, you know, it could be a high school, I mean, all the schools have their own libraries. It should be there for a purpose, you know, and, and the schools are there to educate. And why would we want to have, introduce, you know, like a pornography style of book? And we just used one example. There's other books that you wouldn't want in there. You wouldn't want to have bomb-making books or, you know, How to Be a Terrorist, or, you know, there's all kinds of books you just wouldn't want in there. The, the libraries are there to provide educational material. So I think, you know, I think Adam mentioned that we need just a really robust policy process, I should say, how do you get books in the library? And, and that's, that's what we're talking about. But it's interesting, at the end of this discussion with this, this lady, it turned out she was a retired school teacher. And there's other things we got into, but we had this discussion. And, and it got, you know, it was quite adult-like, and it mellowed out. And then at the very end, I said, you know, and she goes, I don't want pornography books in the school libraries either. So we said, okay, well, you, you get those inflammatory words out of there, like book burning or banning. He said, what are we really talking about? Give me some examples. Also, it's like, well, yeah, okay, I agree with you. So, you know, I said, and we got into teaching history and all kinds of fun stuff. And the end of the conversation, I said, you know, I wouldn't mind having my child go through your class with you as a teacher. And she was like, ah, I'm really honored the fact that you said that. And we realized we're, you know, different sides of the center of the spectrum, so to speak. And, and I think she, she liked what we said. She didn't find one thing wrong with what I was saying, even though she assumed, you know, that, you know, we were, you know, extremists. And we're not, we're just trying to be practical and look for common ground where we should be able to all get along. And, and, you know, if you've got values that are controversial from one family to another, it shouldn't be in the classroom. And, you know, we see them step over bounds on that. And that's all we're saying is let's just find some common ground. And what makes most sense in schools is let's make it education and academics.
Greg makes a really good point here. And that is, I think that every reasonable person would say there is a line to be drawn as to what we expose our children to at a young age. If we're okay with the types of books that we've been discussing thus far, are we okay with books that are flagrantly anti-Semitic? Are we okay with books that espouse white supremacy or racism? Because those books exist. So, you know, for the other folks to say, oh, you know, we somehow are trying to, you know, close down exposure of our children to certain subject matter, I guess the answer to that would be, yeah, at a young age, I am. I don't believe that it's necessary in a young individual's life to be exposed to extreme views or extreme sexualization, you know, content. I think they need to be focusing on, on, on learning the core basics of our society, education, reading, writing, and arithmetic, morality, you know, from the sense of being a good person and treating each others, each other with kindness, and, and community, you know, coming together and being able to accept one another for who we are irrespective of our differences, the core American fundamental values that we all cherish. I don't understand why so other folks have such a desire to deviate from that and to infuse controversial subject matter that is better left either focused on at home or better left for folks to, to be exposed to at a point in their lives where they're in a better context and are far more mature and able to digest it and contextualize it for what it is, rather than to be kind of influenced by it to the extent that they adopt those same radical views. I don't understand why other folks don't seem to feel that that's the case.
Yeah, well, you know, this is, this is the opponent's play, playbook 101. You know, they try to demonize, and they, you know, it's, it's a lie. I hate to say it, but it is a lie, because they're trying to say that you're banning books, and that's not at all what you're saying. You're trying to create a process that includes parents that, that regulates what books are viewed right by children that are age appropriate. That's what you're doing. That's basically what you're doing. And, and the message needs to get out, and that's why I wanted to address it. So you all did that beautifully. Thank you. Thank you very much. The last thing that I just wanted to address is the call to action. What would you say that citizens need to do? Because we're less than two weeks away now. And, and the thing that I neglected to say is that citizens have three votes, basically, for school board, right? And they have, there's three districts, District 1, 2, and 3 for Carmel. And Jenny, you're in District 1. Adam, you're in District 2. And Greg, you're in District 3, correct?
Yep.
Yes. And, and, and you, so you have three votes.
Yep.
In addition, it's a, if you vote straight ticket, folks, make sure that you don't walk away, because you still need to vote for school board candidates. You need to get to the end of the ballot and cast those three votes. So you're not done if you just punch straight ticket. Okay, but call to action. What call to action do you have for the citizens and the parents of Carmel?
So there's a number of things here, Vicki. Sorry to, sorry to jump in, Greg and Jenny. But number one is show up. Make sure you vote, you know, whether it's absentee or in person. There's early voting already open. Do not let this election go by without having your voice heard. We are definitely still looking for volunteers. You can go to our website and, and enter your information. We actually have a signup sheet, not on the website. But if you, if you request a volunteer, one of the options is to be at the polls on Election Day, to be able to say hello to voters coming in, wear a T-shirt, answer any potential questions they may have. We really know, we know that the other side is very mobilized. They, they get a lot of kids involved, you know, they, they've got their narrative that really gets people fired up. And so they'll be out there, and they'll be out there trying to influence the direction that people vote. And so it's just, it's very important that at every polling station, and there are 30 of them, that we have our voices heard as well as folks, or, and we have some visibility as well as folks are coming in to vote. Sign up for a yard sign. If you want to support us from a financial perspective, you can still donate on the website. Obviously, running this campaign does, does take some resources. And beyond that, call your friends, call your family. Make sure that people understand that this is a very important direction. Greg and Jenny and I got into this with the objective of making sure that this community had a choice as to which direction they felt was best for the future of our, our education system. And I think we've achieved that. We have, we have put it out there as an option. And it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of effort, and a lot of folks don't have bandwidth and that, that willingness that we fortunately, you know, found ourselves able to commit to. So we've given folks an option here, but we need them to take it. We need them to show up. We need them to encourage their friends to show up. We need to make sure that the, as I like to say often, the silent majority, which, which we believe we are, has its voice heard.
Excellent.
Yeah, I agree with that. Oh, go ahead, Jenny.
Oh, I was gonna say, and, and the reason, the whole reason we three decided to get together in the first place was we won't be able to effect positive change if only two of us get in or one of us gets in. So it's really important to vote for all three of us.
Yeah, it's very important to not split this ticket when folks vote, because it is interesting, as the election is set up structurally, Greg has one opponent, I have two, and Jenny has three. The way that, you know, that, that, that's completely outside of our control. So if, if, if those tickets that go beyond Greg's, where there's more than two choices, get split, there is a risk that we could lose enough votes to some of the other, you know, candidates. And, and, you know, the, the, the folks on the other side of these issues are very committed to all voting for their singular candidate, of which there's one in each of these, these elections. So it's very important that we don't put this vote, that folks show up. And while I commend some of the other folks running, and I, I don't necessarily disagree with some of their positions, there's, there is a strategic aspect to this, where we need everybody voting for myself, Greg, and Jenny.
You know, I'd add to that, too. That was well said, both of you, that I've talked to a lot of people. The first thing they say to me when I, I tell them I'm running for school board is that, well, you know, my kids are growing up, so I don't really have a stake in it. Or I hear this one a lot, you know, I, I homeschool, or my kids are at a private school or a charter school, so I'm really not, you know, probably, I probably should not be voting for school board. And I, I remind them that I'm running for school board, and I don't have a child in the school now. Hopefully, our granddaughter will go someday. She lives by the high school, our, our son and daughter-in-law. But, you know, we're talking of, you know, a bigger issue is that, you know, where is the direction of this country headed? You know, we, it's where we raise our, how we raise our children and prepare our children. And this is what this is all about. So you are, and you pay for it, you know, your property and your state taxes are what funds the school. So, you know, you need to exercise your right to vote and, you know, vet candidates like us. And I, I think it's, this is the most important, I would argue, the most important election on our ballot, this general election coming up in just a couple of weeks. So, you know, if you're, if you're gonna vote for any, you know, just one thing on the ballot, this is probably the one you should be voting for.
Yeah, I mean, I would add to that, Greg, that, you know, as go the schools, go the community. And we all live in this community. So I understand that a lot of folks have already chosen to, to pursue alternative educational options for their children. We've lost over 500 students already over the past few years out of the Carmel system because of some of the problems that we've identified, some, some of what you even, we've discussed on this call. We're going to continue. We're going to continue to see an exodus out of the school system unless we redirect in a different direction. And, you know, as that happens, the funding decreases. And sadly, the children that get hurt the most are those that don't have alternative options. So, yeah, as Greg said, it's a very important election.
Very well said. Well, I want to thank you all three because I, I can't even imagine the amount of time that this is taking for you to devote to the community and to these, to the children and to the families. I want to personally thank you for doing what you're doing. And, and we are a prayerful organization, so I will be praying for you and for your families.